I will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(applause) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphone, which is a reminder to me to silence my cellphone. Meeting documents are available for review down on the end next to Commissioner Karski. And Craig Dewey is here this morning if you need a listening device. Takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from August 6, 2019.
Move for approval, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the bills to be paid in the amount of $729,445.74.
Pay the bills, second.
Motion in a second, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, our reports. I commend for your reading the Minnehaha County Highway Construction Report for July. Lots of great information in there, lots of work being done out there on our roads and bridges right now. Next item is the Auditor's Office with a review of our financial reports for July 2019. Vicki, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the Auditor's Office, here with some July financials, starting out with the general fund cash balance, sitting at $14,46,000, 1.5 million higher than last year, but again, we're in that time of year where we're spending down that money till our second half property tax comes in, so... And then on to the highway fund, sitting at $11.6 million. Again, we had some big projects that are being paid on in that fund, so... And then on to expenditures for the general fund. The total expenditures for July, $32,572,000, right at 55.9% of budget, just a little over last year. Personnel expenses, the largest portion of that, at $22.2 million, 56.4% of budget. And then other expenses at $10.3 million, 50, just over 50, almost 55% of budget. And then in our revenues, the total revenue sitting at $31.2 million, 55.1% of budget, even with last year. Current taxes, $23,248,000, 53.9% of budget. And then our other revenues at a little over $8 million, so just ahead of last year at 58.7% of budget. So, any questions?
Any questions for Vicki? Vicki, I'm just, I've kind of noticed this the last couple of months, and I'm just curious why our taxes are lagging slightly behind last year? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm thinking it has to do somewhat with the early tax payments we had last year, early in the year, so just kind of a timing thing of those, and then just catching up from that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us to personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to consider a motion to approve updates to the Minnehaha County Drug and Alcohol Testing Procedure Manual. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm requesting your approval on a couple of updates to our Drug and Alcohol Procedures Manual. If you had a chance to look at the redline copy, you'll notice that they're fairly minor. The most significant change is that we're making an edit. Now that we're using Munis, we're able to go ahead and pull the random list ourselves, and that it helps us avoid having to reconcile it with a testing facility. Testing, of course, still continues to be off-site.
Any questions for Carrie? Another opportunity for some efficiencies with Munis, so... All right, I'd consider a motion to approve the updates to the Minnehaha County Drug and Alcohol.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item six, which is an abatement recommended for approval. Chris Lilla, good morning.
Good morning, Chris Lilla Equalization. Yeah, this one here is pretty straightforward. A veteran has been awarded and received his Veterans' Permanent and Total Rating from the VA, but failed to make the deadline, so again, according to codified law, if he would have qualified but missed the deadline, he can request an abatement, so I'm recommending this for approval.
I've got a question, if you don't mind.
Commissioner Karski.
Does he have to reapply for this every year?
No, he does not. It's a one-time deal.
One-time, and it says he's owned his home since May of 2000. How many years can we go back on this?
Well, it depends on the situation of when they do... Basically, it's four years back, if they would have. There's a limitation in the codified law of how far back we can go in it.
Thank you.
But...
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Mr. Karski, it may be that his disability was not total before this either.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's to keep in mind, too. That's why it's not an annual application like some of the other ones. It's considered permanent and total. It's not going to change. Once they get that, it's never going to get reversed, so...
Any further questions?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oops, sorry, roll call vote.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger? Oh, sorry, she's not here. Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to notices and requests. First one is to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of hearing on September 3, 2019, for alcohol beverage license applications from Emerald Pines Barn LLC.
Make a motion to authorize publication, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on September 3, 2019, for mountain beverage and South Dakota farm wine license application from Mighty Corson Art Players.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to authorize the auditor to post notice of hearing on August 27, 2019, for the annual burn JAG program spending plan. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office, requesting a notice to post a hearing for two weeks from now. It's a requirement for our annual burn JAG assistance grant that we split with the city, 65-35 split. We've been notified of the funds that are to be received, but part of that is we have to come up with a spending plan, and then have a period of public comment, which we would like to post notice to have two weeks from now. Also, at that time, I will be bringing the inter-local agreement, asking for a signature on that, which the city will be sending on their half as well as the fiduciary for this grant.
Any questions?
Make a motion to post a notice of hearing, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item are planning and zoning notices. The first one is to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on August 27, which is going to be a busy day, for a proposed land exchange for an emergency access easement. Good morning, Scott.
Yes, good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And this morning, I have prepared a hearing notice and provided that to the auditor. This is, as a result of a... If you recall, a couple of weeks ago, I briefed the county commission on a proposed land exchange for an emergency access easement, and according to SDCL 654, we need to publish a hearing notice before we have that hearing on the 27th. So, in my 30 years of planning experience, I've never done a land swap hearing notice, but I worked with the state's attorney, and they were very helpful. We prepared the hearing notice and requesting that we publish it in the official papers, and that we set the hearing date for August 27.
Are there any questions?
Make a motion to set the date of hearing for August 27, second.
Motion in a second, any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
It's a pretty complicated issue. I'm looking forward to hearing more about it.
It is a complicated issue. I know there's people in the audience who've spent a lot of time working on this issue, including Scott and Carol Muller, and we appreciate all the hard lifting, heavy lifting you guys have done.
And I did attend the Arboretum Board meeting last Thursday, and I informed the Arboretum Board that we would be setting the hearing date today. They know of the hearing date, so I'm trying to make all the players, participants, aware of the meeting, so we can get the public here. Any interest that they have, they can share at that meeting as well.
Well, we appreciate all the folks, including the state's attorney's office, that have spent a lot of time on this, and I think we're going to be able to come forward with a simplified and more easier-to-understand approach, so... All right, now I have lost track. We need a motion in a second, I believe. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien. Melinda, good morning. You've been busy. You've got a whole set here for us.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. We've got three DPNOs this morning. We're going to start with this first one. The request for action... The action requested today is to consider a motion to release the petitioner from joint lien DPNO 26265 in the amount of $6,048.60 with no payment, leaving the remainder of the lien in full against the petitioner's ex-spouse. The petitioner and her ex-spouse were married January 1994 and divorced on September 2010. She's considering purchasing a home in a couple of years and is attempting to eliminate any debt in advance. The lien was previously compromised in full as an uncollectible lien back in 2002 while they were married. The fees that have incurred after the divorce between 2012 and 2019 have all been confirmed to be legal representation for her ex-spouse. Again, the request is to release the petitioner from the lien, leaving the remainder in full against the petitioner's ex-spouse.
Questions from Melinda? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we do the request as stated by Melinda.
Okay. You clear with that? Okay, so motion in a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes you to the second one, Melinda.
Thank you. In the second compromise, the action requested is to consider a motion to compromise and release two liens in this petition only as they apply to the real property with no payment, leaving liens DPNO 92758 with a balance of $1,225.20 and DPNO 37185 with a balance of, excuse me, $2,599.24 in place and in full against the individuals named on the lien. The petitioner, Ben McClure, was married to his ex-spouse Christine on September 2016. There were two pre-existing liens for Christine, which attached to the property when they purchased a home together, January 2017. They later divorced in June 2018, and on July 2018, she transferred by quitclaim deed her interest in the real property located at 102 Prospect Avenue in Dell Rapids, legally described as the south 2.4 feet of Lot 6 and all of Lot 7 and Block 11 of Dell Rapids, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the recorded plat there of "together with all the vacated alley lying between Lots 6 and 7 and said Block 11." The petitioner has a buyer for a property that he's trying to sell and is expecting to close on August 30. He would like to clear the title to complete the sale.
Any questions from Melinda?
Madam Chair.
Really appreciate, Melinda, the work you do on these. You really set out the facts very clearly.
Thank you.
It's very helpful.
Well, two things. One is, before Melinda started doing it, one of us used to do it, and if I could get tongue-twisted, which never happens to me, it would happen then. The other thing is, is it possible that this quitclaim process is being used to circumvent giving us or repaying us?
I defer to the state's attorney if they want to make a comment or not.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Well, I mean, anything's possible. I mean, it's, it would be speculation on everybody's part, I suppose, to make that determination, especially in view of the statutes being... Statutes are very specific as to who's responsible, so for example, court-appointed attorney's fees, just the individual who receives the service is responsible, and so it's certainly possible.
I would note that it was part of the divorce decree, if I remember correctly, that that happened. Any further comments or questions?
Make a motion to approve it, as suggested.
Motion in a second, any further comments? Commissioner Benega?
I just have a question, because I think Jeff's question was good. Is there any way that we can guarantee when the proceeds from the House are processed that we will receive a payment?
Well, if we remove the lien from the House...
I think I know the answer.
Then we won't receive anything.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Commissioner Benega, so does that alter your perspective on this particular one?
It does a little bit, because it seems like there is some responsibility from the proceeds that should be supported for the debt that they incurred, but I agree with Commissioner Bender. It's pretty well stated in the divorce decree on what can happen, so... Not that I agree with that, but I don't know that we can tie their hands, so to speak.
Commissioner, I'll defer to the state's attorneys.
Well, it just so happens that on this particular case, it's a perfect scenario for... That doesn't... Shouldn't give you any doubt as to whether or not any equity was lost in that quitclaim deed equity that the county would have been entitled to, because on this particular case, it's a situation where for the 92758, that was court-appointed attorney fee for the ex-spouse, and she's the only one responsible there for that amount. Now, it's certainly possible that there was some equity, Commissioner, like you suggested, that could be lost in that quitclaim deed. In order to remedy that, I think you'd need a legislative fix. And then the second one, 37185, that's one that simply wouldn't be attached to the property because of the fact that it was all premarital and isn't contemplated by the statute, so that, too, would take a legislative fix. But under 37185, there's not even an attachment there that would apply because of the language of the statute.
This looks like a legal quagmire.
May I speak in regard to the lien itself?
Absolutely.
Just to... I'm going to just do a little brief rundown of the lien itself. His ex-spouse was previously married, so the liens that were accrued in 2015 are... They occurred when she was married to somebody else. The two that occurred in 2017 actually have to do with juveniles, her children, and her previous spouse. And then the 2018, again, is for the ex-spouse alone. So, none of these lien fees have anything to do with the petitioner. There are actually, I believe, there's possibly even two other males involved that are responsible for the children that she has. So, it's kind of...
I read that.
Okay.
People get their lives very complicated. All right, so I think, if I remember correctly, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Motion in a second. Is there further discussion? If not, I entertain a roll call vote.
Benega? Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes three to one. All right.
Not that I don't agree with you.
No, I understand. I understand the policy behind your vote.
I'm trying to just comment that we shouldn't always act with one opinion. It's good to have a decision.
There's a lot of things in life that reasonable people can disagree about, for sure, so... All right, that takes us to the last one.
On this third compromise, the action requested is to consider a resolution to rescind and replace Resolution MC 1526 to correct the legal description of the real property involved and compromise DPNO 69715 only as it applies to the property with no payment. This petition originally came before the Board in 2015, and the Board approved Resolution MC 1526 to partially compromise the lien with no payment as it applied to the property located at 309 Granite Avenue, Garrettson, South Dakota, legally described at that time as the east half vacated alley lying adjacent to the north half vacated alley lying adjacent to Lots 7 and 8, Block 4, Royce Edition to the City of Garrettson. That legal description, we were informed by Getty Abstract, that the... It's incomplete and partially incorrect. So, that... I can explain how that occurred. When we brought that petition for compromise forth in 2015, our commission office staff went to the equalization page to get a legal description, because originally, we did not require the petitioner to submit an entire packet, you know, with a legal description and financials, thinking that, well, this is pretty clear what we need done here. And the equalization department doesn't actually list the entire legal description, at least not at that time. They might be something they may consider differently in the future. So, that's what brought us to that short version. The correct legal description for this property at 309 Granite Avenue is Lots 7, 8, 19, 20, 21, and 22 in Block 4 of Royce's Third Edition in the City of Garrettson, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the recorded plat there of, including the entire portion of the vacated alley adjacent to and between said lots 7, 8, 19, 20, and including the north half of the vacated alley adjacent to said lots 8 and 19, and included the north half of the vacated alley adjacent to said vacated alley between lots 8 and 19, and including the west half of the vacated alley adjacent to said lots 21 and 22, subject to easements, restrictions, and rights of way of record in any. So, there's a significant difference in the description of the property, so that's my request, to consider a resolution to rescind MC 1526 and to replace it with this resolution today, so that's it.
Repeat the description. I believe you guys didn't get it right in 2015.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A second, all in favor? All right, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, this is our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to speak about something that's not on our agenda, this is your opportunity.
Make sure he identifies himself.
Please. Jeff Barth, Minnehaha County. So, many of you know that I served in the United States military, and I proudly fly an American flag in front of my house. And just last week, I put it back to the top. I'm sick and tired of lowering it to half-mast every time we have a mass shooting. I'm not going to lower it anymore. You know, prayers and thoughts aren't doing anything, nothing. You know, we talk about a well-regulated militia. Well, thank goodness, we have those well-regulated militia people shooting down our fellow citizens everywhere across this country. Thank goodness, we have... Ted Cruz said, the Second Amendment is to protect our freedom. Well, think about the freedom fighters that shot all those people in Walmart. Think about the freedom fighter that shot those people in Dallas. He shot and killed five cops. Hey, he was fighting for his freedom. Thank goodness. How about the Walmart thing? Was there no Texan in that 2,000 people that was armed? You know, where's the good guy with the gun that stops it? It doesn't stop it. I think maybe a can of tuna fish in the forehead might have helped, but I'm sick of it. You know, we had the... We had the shooting in Dayton, and in 30 seconds, 32 seconds, he killed nine people and wounded 27. Now, when I was a kid, there was a saying, "Shoot first, ask questions later." If you see a guy pull out a rifle at a concert, at a fairgrounds, shoot him. You know, these freedom fighters are shooting country western fans, are shooting church attenders, are shooting black people, are shooting Jews. It's wrong. We've got to do something. And I'm not lowering my flag anymore. You know, a few minutes ago, we said the Pledge of Allegiance with liberty and justice for all. That's for all of us, not just for... Not just for the guy that owns a rifle. And you know, all white people are not racists. All black people are not criminals. All Hispanics are not illegal. Stop it.
Thank you. Really critical issue that our whole nation needs to deal with, so I appreciate your comments. Anyone else for public comment here today? All right, so that takes us to regular business. First item is to authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement with Infrastructure Design Group for Construction Administration of Project MC 16-02, Structure 50-72-100 and 50-70-98 Replacements. D.J. Boothby, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. We had a bid in May of this year for replacement of two structures, one of them on County Highway 155, one of them on County Highway 122, right around the corner from one another. Pram Construction got that bid, and they have a completion date of October of 2020, and so they plan on starting somewhere around November 1st this year, doing one of the bridges over the winter time, and then doing the second bridge after they finish the first one. And so, we've received a proposal from our engineering consultant that designed both of these structures, the proposal for construction administration services and inspection of the work. That was provided to you in the memo and the packet, and we're looking for your approval today that the agreement is for $136,667.75. That includes inspection of both structures and some follow-up work that they had to do to complete the original final design, final bid packet. And so, looking for your approval on that, and I'll stand by if you have any questions.
Questions for D.J.?
Move approval, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, item 11, is to consider a resolution to submit the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center for the SDACC 2019 County Achievement Award. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to approve a resolution that is before you to submit to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, SDACC, for their annual award of achievement, the application for the archive facility. That's a joint project, city, county, and private, bit unique, very successful as to how that occurred, and we look forward to bringing that in. And a resolution is required as part of the application.
Any questions? Now that I'd consider a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Karski.
We all got a copy of, I believe, anyway, that the Brandon Valley Journal, Mr. Baumeister here, did an excellent article on our Director of Equalization, Chris Lilla. I just want to thank him for that and recognize, you know, it is a great article, and if anybody has... wonders what the has, wonders what the purpose of the Office of Equalization is, read it. You'll, you can learn a lot just from this one article. So thanks, Dave, and just shout out to Chris for the article.
I would agree. Any, any others?
I'm sure.
Commissioner Barth?
I attended the fair a few times, and I think the weather was great out there. I think perhaps Friday night, there was a little bit of a storm before the evening program got going, but I think that it was a good week for the fair.
I'd, I'd point out, I mean, I have also heard that they've done quite well in attendance and financially. Kind of to take on some of your earlier comments, I think sometimes there are lots of times where we aren't thankful for things that don't happen. And, you know, I think the fair is a great example of, of a situation where I, I know in visiting with our sheriffs that they beefed up some security out at the fair to deal with some concerns about some of the shootings that have happened on the east side and, and those folks maybe being drawn to the fair. And, you know, we had a great incident-free fair for which we can be thankful for. And, you know, I think there's a lot of times that as citizens, we aren't aware of what's going on behind the scenes and neglect to be properly thankful for the people who every day are out doing the hard job of protecting all of us so we can have a good time at a concert or eat a extra corn dog or two. So, all right. Other liaison reports? I would also note that I was able to attend one of the facilities' planning committee meetings last week. That work continues to go on this week. I appreciate Commissioner Karski's leadership on that and Commissioner Benega being involved in that, and all the, the citizens that have volunteered to be part of that group. They're doing a deep dive into a lot of information about our facilities and, and our financing opportunities. And so we're looking forward to that, completion of that work and continuing to move that process forward. So. All right, there's no more liaison reports. Any new business? Any old business? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach with the Minnehaha County IT Department. I filled in a couple of questions regarding our ERP project, so I thought I would give you the opportunity to ask questions, if it's all right. I'll just start off by kind of giving you an update of where we're at, if that's all right. I'm going to back up a little bit and kind of start with the beginning of this, as far as, you know, how the project started it, because this project started before a few of you were, were on the commission. So back in 2014, there was kind of some encouragement from the Commission Office and the Auditor's Office to have some updated or update our accounting and financial software. So in about 2014, the Commission Office and myself met with a company called Barry Dunn, who does accounting consulting engagements with local governments and private businesses across the, the nation. And we spoke with them, and we ended up entering into an engagement with them to do a needs assessment. And in that engagement, they came in, they interviewed county employees, the IT department, to kind of see where we're at and evaluate where the county had needs, you know, as far as their financial software and ERP solution goes. And that resulted in a needs assessment report that basically said the county has lots of legacy-based applications, AS400-based applications, that although the county has created some auxiliary modern applications around the perimeter of those, those financial applications, that core financial and ERP solution should probably be evaluated and upgraded to a more modern system. So that then led into a full request for proposal for an ERP system. And I should probably define it what an ERP system means for us here at Minnehaha County, because it's different from one organization to the next. For us, an ERP or Enterprise Resource Planning Solution means our four, our core financial system, as well as our payroll system, and then also our property tax system. As you know, Minnehaha County is responsible for collecting the property taxes, not just for us, but for the cities, townships, schools, with inside of our county. So anyways, we worked with Barry Dunn, we engaged with them again to help guide us through that process. We had six core people on that team. We engaged departments to ask questions and to develop the RFP. We ended up with an RFP that had thousands of, of questions regarding, you know, does the vendor's solution do XYZ? So a very robust request for proposal. We put that out to bid then to, to software vendors. The responses were a little bit disappointing. We were really shooting for one vendor's solution that could do all of those things versus trying to have interfaces between payroll and financials and financials and property tax. We were really hoping to find one solution that, from one vendor that had all of, that could meet all of our needs. And so anyways, we did have a response from Tyler Technologies, which is one of the largest public sector software companies in the nation. They have well over a thousand governments that are on their Munis software system that we ultimately ended up selecting. And then they recommended going with Ty-, or with Tyler Incode for the property tax solution. And the reason why that is, is because Tyler Munis didn't have a, a property tax system developed in Munis for the state of South Dakota, so they recommended Tyler Incode. And they were committed to creating that interface between, between those two systems. So anyways, in early 2017, we signed an agreement and started that project. We went live with Tyler Munis in May of 2018 and live with Tyler Incode Tax in, at that same time, in about May of 2018. The dust didn't settle much before we had to go into the next phase, the third phase, which was the Tyler Munis payroll system. So we just went live with that here in, in early July. We had our first paychecks July 3rd, I believe it was. And so that phase went relatively well, and we're kind of letting the dust settle on that. We're finalizing some reports, but overall that, that project went very well. I think we need to take a little bit of time to celebrate. These are very complicated, challenging projects. There are other local governments across the nation that are not in the position that we're in, where they're still in and, and running on those older legacy systems. There are other local governments that are, that have already been through what we've been through. I recently sent, sat in some meetings with the local government from North Dakota that had come down to, to meet with the, the city regarding their use of Tyler Munis. And they have a large project like, like this to go through themselves, to, to modernize their systems. So they're, they're challenging, complicated, take a lot of resources. We're fortunate we had also the skill set that we, that we have internally to make it through those projects. The, the data conversions can be challenging. And, and so anyways, I think we're very fortunate to have, have made it through those conversions and the project as a whole. And anyways, so now we've, we've been through all three phases. We're just really kind of wrapping some things up. Overall, things went very well. This solution's not perfect. If there was a perfect solution out there that met all of the requirements that we had, that had absolutely no flaws and no issues, that would have been on our radar and we would have evaluated it. I think the solution that we selected was the best solution. It's, it's the only solution that is purchasable, that has done property taxes or is designed for property taxes in the state of South Dakota. So when it comes to that portion of the ERP system, there really was not other options out there for us to choose from. The Tyler Incode solution is going to evolve. Tyler Incode 10 is the, really the solution that we want to get to when it comes to property taxes. So one project leads to another. We'll have to work through that in the years to come. With that being said, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Karski?
Thank you very much, Monty. There's a country song, "Close enough to perfect for me." You know, I think we're probably there. I had reached out and through Carol and asked questions of Monty and, you know, heard the reply privately. And I thought it was a, you know, my question and what Monty just gave us today were what I needed, and it needed to be said publicly. I mean, I've heard terms like ERP, Tyler, Incode, Munis, used a lot since I came on, and most of them preceded me. So I just kind of wanted the Reader's Digest, abridged version of, you know, what, what all these moving parts are. And I think most of us understand that when it comes to software, it's obsolete as soon as it hits the street. But, you know, we, we take what we have and we make it work. And I'm glad to hear that the process, and not just one process, but numerous processes have been brought together. And you have given us updates from time to time, and I appreciate that. And it, thank you for what you do, and thanks for being here today to bring this to us.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Benega?
I would just say the same thing that Dean has said. They've kind of been involved since the beginning, and frankly, conversions aren't just switching on one different program and getting rid of another. And generally speaking, they are difficult to go through. And you, you and your leadership and the team that you work with, the department heads, the people who did the training, and frankly, the implementation, and lived through the dual systems for a while, did an awesome job. I've been through a few conversions in my history, and I don't think I've seen many of them go much smoother than what you and your team put together. So thank you.
Thank you. And I will point out, it was a team, you know, so I may be up here speaking you today. I, I'm one member of a team. We, we couldn't have done it without the group from the Auditor's Office, folks from my staff. I don't want to mention names because I don't want to miss anybody, but it definitely was a team effort. And had the county put this off and, and tried to migrate from, from an AS400 legacy system to a modern system in, in 10 years from now, I, I don't know how you'd do it. It would be very, very challenging because you need to have that, that correct skill set to, to make it through a project like this. And like I said earlier, there are other local governments that haven't gone through this, and they're, they're going to have some of those folks that are, that are going to retire that support those legacy systems, and they're going to find themselves in, in a difficult position.
Go to the nursing home to get support staff.
Commissioner Barth?
Thank you for bringing us this update. And are we done then? Or are there still issues? I know I've heard a complaint or two from some department. Are we done?
Yes. So for the most part, we're wrapping up a few things. The, the challenges, I think, that you've heard of are really not necessarily related to bugs or, or issues with the software, rather getting used to the, the processes to use the software. So, for example, you know, bank deposits and, and things like that, different tips and tricks and techniques that, that one can use to make sure that the bank deposit that we have recorded in our books is recorded in the same month as it ends up getting recorded in, in, at the bank for maybe end of the month deposits. You know, those, those tips and tricks and techniques probably are something that the county still needs to, to learn and work through to make sure that from a month-to-month basis, those, those things match up. But, but those aren't necessarily software issues. They're just working through and figuring out maybe some new processes.
I'm sure.
Mr. Barth?
I'm going to agree with Gerald Benega on, on this. I've, in my career as in telecommunications, we had updated a computer system every five years, and it was horrible. And the, the old system was the best ever. And the new horrible system, when it's replaced five years from now, was the best ever, and the new one is horrible. It's just, it's just like the seasons of the year, winter, spring, summer, and fall. And there'll be people in this room complaining about the replacement of these things, hopefully in more than five years, but.
Yeah. You know, and there's many, many processes that were streamlined and improved during this, this large project. And then there's some situations where maybe something isn't as smooth or slick as you'd hope it would be, or something doesn't work exactly how you think it might work or should work. That's just the nature of, of software. All of the large software projects that I've been a part of, you're going to, you're going to get those challenges where, well, gosh, I used to do it this way in, in the previous system. And that's where a lot of the time and effort and focus and, and whatnot comes, comes from is those things. Because the things that are simpler and easier and better, people just embrace those and, and you move past those. And then you spend a lot of time talking about the things that are more of a challenge or maybe didn't work quite as good as, as the previous system. So it's pretty normal and typical, and, and this project's no, no different in that aspect.
Commissioner Benega?
I just would say that I've heard people in this business of, of computer software and hardware talk about it's kind of like working with a mechanic 20 years ago that was working on your car where everything was cumbersome, labor-intensive. And now when you go to have your car repaired or fixed, it's a plug-in, a response from a computer system, and
Yeah.
that's kind of going through like a software update or a change. It's not as easy as it looks from the outside, but it's labor-efficient, and down the road, it will be frankly, the way we will do business.
Just, just I was using the clutch in my pickup truck.
One, one example of, you know, something that was streamlined, maybe a couple, but one in particular is related to payroll, you know. All of the, the time entry data at one point in time was all hand keyed in from a different system into the payroll, the HTE, AS400-based payroll system. That information's all imported now. So it's not just a, a matter of saving those keystrokes from that one person, but it's also the, the accuracy that we're bringing that information over and the consistency that we're doing it and the ability to, you know, in the future, if, if, when we have, you know, employee turnover, to be able to put a new person into a position and say, this is the process, and not have that person have so much institutional knowledge to try to look at, at information, calculate what should be overtime or what's a valid time entry and what's not, but rather have the system figure out what's, what's valid and what's not, and have that information be imported versus entered in. So just streamlining some of those things and minimizing where you can the, the data entry that's needed. Another, another area where we had to gain is bringing in credit card transactions. Those credit card transactions are brought into Tyler Munis from, from our, our bank. And then each department codes those against whatever, whatever particular account, chart of accounts that they want those purchases to be applied to. And attachments, like invoices and whatnot are attached to it, and those are processed. Much more streamlined process than what it used to be, and again, part of your, your main purchasing solution. So anybody can go back and look at a purchase and see that invoice as an attachment.
Anything else? Once again, I would just like to thank you and, and the entire team that you worked with. Like you said, you don't realize, but I know there were hours and hours spent planning, which led ultimately, I think, to the successful implementation. But, you know, all that planning was really helpful. It helped, I know particularly because I was more involved in the, the payroll part of it, just, you know, that gives you an opportunity to audit your practices, see where of it, just, you know, that gives you an opportunity to audit your practices, see where you could, could be better. And so all, the whole process, I think, is worthwhile, and I just really, I know as a team, but you were the leader, and we really appreciate your leadership on, on these very challenging projects.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, any more old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will reconvene into executive session in about ten minutes. Thank you, everyone.